Jamie or Katie, do we have, um, we have other RSVPs for tonight?
We do. Um, I believe we also should have.
I'm texting them now.
But she's running a bit late. Uh, Rachel and Jessica.
I'm texting them reminders right now.
Okay.
We've got Rachel joining now. And that makes four. We're good. You have, are you set?
Recording in progress.
Okay, well, we will get started. Um, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission of Branford. Today is Thursday, June twenty-six, two thousand five, uh, twenty-five, excuse me. The time is now seven oh-two. Um, please note that this meeting is being held remotely via Zoom in accordance with Public Act twenty-two dash three, and all speakers will be required to identify their name and title each time they speak. Materials related to the agenda items can be found on the agency's webpage, um, or via the drop box in the agenda. My name is Commissioner Boda, and I will be chairing the meeting tonight in Commissioner, uh, Chairman Basserman's absence. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone that the commission's purview is Connecticut General Strategy twenty-two A through, uh, dash thirty-six through twenty-two A dash forty-five, as well as the inland wetland and water course regulations of the town of Branford. And all matters before the commission must pertain to those regulations. Um, and with that being said, I'd like to, um, start with our number two on our list, which is our roll call. So, um, we have Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, present.
Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Gokowski, present.
Commissioner Mersky.
Commissioner Mersky, present.
Um, and are there any other commissioners present who I have not called? And I'm Commissioner Boda. I am also present, um, and staff, um, Jamie Frederick.
Present.
And, uh, staff Katie Blanchett.
Present.
Thank you. Next up, we have our minutes for approval, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting minutes.
Well, this is Commissioner Gokowski. I make a motion to approve the minutes as recorded from the May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five meetings.
This is Commissioner Begum, on second.
Okay, we have, Katie, you good? We have a first, we have a second.
Proceed.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, and I will abstain.
Hey, moving right on. In the wetland agent, just noting, uh, for the record, that Melissa Papitonas has joined the meeting.
Okay.
So, sorry, I just got home. I was late.
We're happy that you're here. Better late than never. Okay, we are on, uh, item number four. We're, uh, next up is application for review, and then Wetland twenty-five oh-five oh-one, Eight Orchard Ave. Um, Jamie, would you set the scene for us, please?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. Um, so the commission received a presentation at the last meeting. We've received some revised materials since then, um, and the applicant is present to kind of walk over those changes, um, walk through those changes. And I did prepare a staff report with some possible conditions for consideration. Um, I think one of the bigger changes is that the width of the bridge was reduced slightly in response to some of the concerns regarding excavation in the width of, uh, the land area adjacent to the pond. Um, so I guess I would hand it over to the applicant to kind of run through those changes, and then we can, uh, run through the staff report.
Okay, and this is Commissioner Boda. Jamie, can you clarify for us where we are in the timeline for this application?
Yeah, so the application is, um, in the review phase, and the commission has until July eleventh to make a decision without any continuances. So if the commission felt that more information was warranted, you could continue it to the next meeting, which is July tenth.
Thank you. And who do we have here this evening for Eight Orchard Ave?
Uh, we've got Paul Muniz, and, uh, if you want me to share anything, Mr. Muniz, just let me know what documents you want to share from the file.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Paul Muniz. I'm the Vice President of the Hotchkiss Grove Shore District. I'm also the Chairman of the Town of Branford Solid Waste Management Commission. I'm representing the shore district in this case, and I appreciate your time. Um, this is our second appearance in front of the commission. At the previous meeting, which was approximately a month ago, um, we presented design drawings, uh, to support an application for approval to replace a failing bridge on a privately owned road. The responsibility for maintenance or replacement is held by the Hotchkiss Grove Shore District, which is a, uh, tax district and a duly established political subdivision within the state. Um, at, uh, in advance of that meeting, a month ago, we received staff comments. We responded in writing to all of the staff comments, and we received comments from the engineering department. We responded in writing to all of those, uh, engineering department comments. As the wetlands agent pointed out, in addition to providing responses, which are commented on in the staff report prepared for this meeting, uh, we have made, um, minor modifications to the design. And as the wetlands agent pointed out, we've reduced the width of the replacement bridge, uh, which would be located within a fifth, approximately fifteen-foot wide roadway from fourteen feet down to twelve feet to provide additional, um, unexcavated area on the pond side or the east side of, uh, privately owned Orchard Avenue. In addition, the concern was proximity of the proposed construction to, uh, Talmadge's Ice Pond. In addition to narrowing the width of the proposed bridge replacement, uh, we have also narrowed the width of the bridge abutments to be installed by excavation, also serving as foundations, uh, for the bridge on, be the next slide. Um, we've narrowed, on the right-hand side, we've narrowed the width of the, uh, abutment on the south side of the bridge and, um, tapered it so that the separation distance to the existing town-owned sanitary sewer line is increased. The separation distance is increased by reducing the size of the abutment. It's a stamped plan by the civil engineer, uh, attesting to the validity of the smaller abutment um, to support the load of the proposed replacement bridge deck. Um, the town, any questions on that so far? Um, there was also a comment that we responded to in writing from the engineering department, expressing concern about, if you go to the next slide, uh, expressing concern about the depth of the base of that southern abutment relative to the burial depth of the sanitary sewer line, which in this image would be to the left of that foundation pore. Um, the, uh, initial written response, um, was that we would identify the depth of the sanitary sewer line, the burial depth of the sanitary sewer line when construction started. Um, the town engineer this week asked for a test pit uh, to be installed in advance of construction. We've, uh, arranged for a test pit to be installed, but we've suggested to the town engineer um, that that test pit should be installed as the first activity of construction so that, um, any instability caused by the test pit, the duration of that instability is reduced uh, in duration by having construction proceed directly after the test pit is installed to confirm the burial depth of the pipe. In an email, uh, that we received, um, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of June, um, proposing that that, uh, duration and sequence be bundled together, the town engineer indicated, "That seems reasonable to me and something we would do on the town side to minimize surprises during construction." So, uh, we're prepared to do a test pit. We're prepared to do it directly in advance of, uh, construction. We also measured the invert elevations of the sanitary sewer line from the location, uh, where the bridge will be constructed. Actually, uh, Ms. Frederick, maybe, yeah, go back to here. So we measured the invert elevations from, uh, the center of Orchard Avenue where there's a manhole. Um, and, uh, along the burial depth of the sanitary sewer to find out the actual burial depth because um, temporary, uh, traffic modification will be made, um, along this driveway that, um, you can see the outline of the driveway uh, through the property owner, property owner of the bridge and their neighbor, uh, driveway, uh, to provide access back to Route one forty-six during what's anticipated to be a two-week construction period. We proposed, uh, placing road plates where the sanitary sewer burial depth um, is as shallow as, I believe, one and a half feet. I could look on my drawing and tell you the exact value. We can try blowing that up. Um, zooming in. So the top of frame in the middle of the road is at elevation six point five-two, and the, uh, top of the pipe is only five point two. So there's one point three feet of burial depth for a town sanitary sewer down somebody's driveway. We're gonna be adding three houses worth of passenger cars down that driveway for two weeks. Uh, we will agree to install road plates beyond the dimensions shown in this, uh, site plan to include, um, the distance back to the next, I believe the net, it is the next, um, manhole, uh, that the town has requested the, the, uh, road plate placement be extended to. Um, so the, notwithstanding any additional comments or conditions that the wetland agent would bring up tonight, um, the engineering department concerns have been accommodated, uh, and addressed through our commitment to extend the dimension of the road plated area down a private driveway that'll provide temporary access for residents during construction. And we do intend to install a test pit probably by, ideally by vacuum extraction methods. So with a vacuum truck, um, to re, to, to remove the overlying soil as opposed to shoveling it out with a backhoe. This is much safer and more protective of buried utilities. Um, if we can excavate the entire abutment trench um, south of the proposed bridge by vacuum extraction methods, we'll do that and drop the, um, reinforcing steel into that trench for, um, construction of the foundation. If stabilization of the sanitary sewer line is necessary based on the observations made during the test pit, uh, conventional stabilization methods, bracing, um, uh, with an overlying or adjacent uh, w- weight-bearing block to strap the, um, braced pipe to would be performed. It's a pretty conventional, um, uh, method when, uh, utility piping is exposed within a trench, as would be the case here. I can answer any questions or, or, uh, respond to any additional conditions that the wetlands agent may have added in the most recent staff report from this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz.
Good evening, Mr. Muniz. Uh, Commissioner Gokowski here. Um, my question is, and I'm sure you, you're gonna have a good response for me 'cause you, you've been very detail-oriented on this whole thing. But my concern is, we do see the size of the, the width of the, uh, the crossing of the bridge. Uh, that's a pretty dramatic, um, change. I mean, the fire apparatus has gotta be wider than twelve feet.
Now, the town fire apparatus.
Excuse me, uh, this is, this is, uh, Acting Chair Boda. I, I just wanna make sure that we're staying connected to wetland issues and we're not, um, inping into planning and zoning issues.
It does have, it does directly involve the inland wetlands issues because the road is abutting the wetlands, but there's also a safety feature involved, too.
But this is, this is, uh, applicant Muniz. The, uh, town fire apparatus, uh, we believe to be a maximum of ten feet uh, uh, outside to outside on the, on the tires and axles. Um, the roadway at twelve feet is adequate for up to a twelve-foot vehicle. Um, the road is fifteen feet wide. Uh, the bridge will end up being twelve feet. Um, the, the fail, the potential failure of the bridge is that, you know, it's a, it's a very serious, uh, safety question, which is why we're taking the action to replace it. Um, we can only get, you know, five pounds in a five-pound bag, so, uh, the, the width of the, um, uh, you know, the width of the road and the width of the bridge, um, uh, will be consistent with the current conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I just wanna point out that Commissioner Myasen has joined the meeting and, uh, W.C. did.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there other, uh, do other commissioners have questions, um, for the applicant? Or, uh, based on the, um, the staff report? Do you wanna look at the staff report?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, we received the application fee. The only disturbance within a wetland slash water course is the replacement of the bridge deck spanning the water course. Um, did not require a wetland delineation that was overviewed at the last meeting, given that the edge of the pond and water course are pretty self-evident in this particular case. Um, we did receive an updated site plan since the last meeting, which we've kind of touched based on regional water authority and adjacent native value notices not applicable for this application. Um, back in twenty nineteen, there was another application submitted, which was ultimately withdrawn, went back to the drawing board to assess what the actual needs were, and we have the application that we have now. Um, erosion controls. I left kind of the language I had in here originally and supplemented it.
This is Commissioner Boda. Can you stop for a second? Um, uh, was the, the issue of, um, water drawdown addressed?
So the applicant indicated that there would not, there was no intention to do a water drawdown.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so kind of along those lines, I left a lot of the initial language in here, and then in italics, kind of added some of the response language, um, that was received since the last meeting. So in erosion controls, we did receive, uh, some updated information both on the site plan and in a written comment response. Um, so one thing I will jump over and point out real quick is that the one adjustment, uh, that I noted is that these, the erosion controls um, on the, what is it, uh, southeast side should be extended along the edge of Orchard Ave, essentially to where the edge of the water course is, just to make sure that, um, any runoff coming off of the roadway is captured by those erosion con, or filtered through those erosion controls prior to entering the water course. That was something that the applicant indicated in his written response, but didn't make it onto the site plan. So I do have, um, possible condition language for the commission to consider in that regard. Uh, I also, there's no detail provided for the installation of the erosion control. So I did, uh, also suggest the possible condition of basically just saying that all erosion controls shall be installed compliant with the, uh, Connecticut Erosion and Sedimentation Control Guidelines. We already discussed that the width was reduced from fourteen feet to twelve feet, which gives them a little bit more space to put erosion controls along the pond side of construction. Um, the staging area is shown and has some hay bales proposed as erosion controls. Also, the staging area will be on pavement, so hopefully there shouldn't be too much disturbance there. Um, see, there was some confusion over the removing existing CMU walls, and that has been revised on the site plans. Um, nah. Yeah, and then we went over the potential conflict with the sewer line and the modifications, um, that were proposed to accommodate that stormwater. The plans are revised to show riprap slope up, riprap up slope of the southeast corner of the bridge. So hopping back over here, uh, the water kind of generally sheet flows over Orchard Ave. Uh, some of it flowing to the northeast, and some of it blowing south, or sorry, northwest, and some of it southwest. Um, and so there is a little bit of washout in this area, so they're proposing to place six-inch of crushed stone to form riprap apron in this area. Um, which I think ultimately is going to kind of solve any ongoing issues that, that might, um, you know, exacerbate over time. Um, there's not a lot of understorey growth there, so it shouldn't really impact things in that regard. Um, and now.
Commissioner Begum, I have a question. The six inches of crushed stone for riprap, they tell, and crushed stone is small. Are they putting in larger stones as well? I think a riprap is being bigger, but may I, I may just be wrong.
Uh, Mr. Muniz, would you like to clarify?
This is applicant Muniz. I, I think what we should have written on the plan was, um, uh, we were gonna use riprap no greater than six inches on any dimension. So it's pretty, pretty decent size.
Mm-hmm.
So this is Commissioner Boda, just clarifying. So you're saying that the si, the size of this dome is six inches, not the, you're not talking about a depth?
No, the, the, the rocks, we're not gonna excavate anything in the area where stormwater runoff jumps the curb, but by placing riprap, which is typically four to six inches in any dimension, 'cause it's angular, um, that should be heavy enough to withstand uh, stormwater gutter flow.
Yeah, so the understorey vegetation in that area is barberry, so for it to be removed is no sad story. Um, uh, let's see. Landscaping, applicant, uh, so basically there will be some invases removed to install erosion controls and that riprap that we were just talking about. Um, some natives may need to be pruned, uh, but no natives would be supposed for removal. Um, proposed to seed with New England wet mix, uh, in any areas that need it post-construction, um, which would mostly be along the edge of the roadway. Um, and then the concern was that the original plant didn't show erosion controls on the pond side of the road, which has been revised. Uh, because the proposed disturbance is less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, no mitigation is required. Uh, the project is to restore an existing condition, um, so doesn't really come into play. Um, and prudent feasible alternative analysis is not required unless the agency makes a finding that proposed activity may have a significant impact or the agency requests the analysis be submitted. Um, that was not requested at the last meeting. Um, and it's been represented that the proposal is to replace the existing crossing for safe access purposes. Um, town engineer provided comments via email May twenty-second and June tenth. Uh, possible conditions for consideration include a pre-construction meeting prior to any clearing, initial erosion control inspection prior to any land disturbance, and a final inspection. Two erosion and sedimentation control measures along the southern boundary of the water course shall be extended in a northwesterly direction along Orchard Ave to the satisf, satisfaction of the duly authorized agent to ensure adequate protection of the water course during construction activities as outlined in the correspondence from Paul Muniz dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Could I just interrupt? This is applicant Muniz. I think that that direction reference should be southwest, but you, we're, look, the, the, the drawing is not orient, the north is to the left, kind of, so. Um,
So I was thinking it should be extended along northwest from where the erosion controls, and.
So along, so, yeah, I was, I've got. So along, so, yeah, I was, I've got my directions all screwed up here. So the original, the original layout of the hay bales, west of the bridge kind of followed the southern boundary of the water course, those little necklace looking thing. But then we, we tweaked it so that it goes more towards the south to pick up runoff from Orchard Ave. Which runoff are we trying, are we, do we want the hay bales to, don't we, wouldn't we want the hay bales to be more tweaked back towards the bridge? So that the runoff goes into the woods? Or do we want to, do we want to go along the necklace and along the curb of Orchard?
So
Have it be L-shaped, that would probably be better.
You mean if it were to follow the bank like it does on the other side and then curve up?
Yeah, and then just flatten out so it's like an upside down J or something.
Yeah, so that means, that means the same intent of what my condition is getting at, but
If you're going to come out for an inspection, we'll put them wherever you want. But I, I would think we'd want to keep the runoff from going
Yeah, I think we're looking at it two different ways, but we're looking at the same thing. You're looking at it from one direction. And I'm looking, so when I say northwesterly, I mean northwesterly from here. So it could be, it could be like a seven or it could be like that J that you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
So let me go back. We could just get rid of and say shall be extended along, get rid of in a northwestern direction and say along Orchard Ave to the satisfaction of the commission.
Yeah, along Orchard Ave and, yeah, the southern
And then that would be part of the pre-construction meeting, confirming where that's going to be.
Yeah, okay.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. I'm just a little confused. I thought Mr. Muniz was the actual applicant for the Hotchkiss Grove Association. Where are the, the applicant owners Kathleen and Parker Fox? Why haven't we heard from them?
This is applicant Muniz, so the
Well, technically, Mr. Muniz, you're not the applicant because you're not the property owner.
Well, no, we, we are the applicant because the Hotchkiss Grove Shore District is responsible for maintaining private roads within the dimensions of the district. And the road is a private road that is present on private property. So within Hotchkiss Grove, we have private roads. But then in this case, we also have a private, private road.
Okay.
But our establishment, our charter says private roads. It doesn't distinguish between private, private roads and private roads.
Okay, so, yeah, because I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the statement from the what Jamie has drawn up for possible review. And it did not mention Hotchkiss Grove. That's why I was a little confused and I'm looking at it. And I didn't know who the Foxes were, so.
This is applicant news. The Foxes are getting a free bridge.
Yeah, so the applicant is Hotchkiss Grove Shore District, and the owners of where the activity is being proposed are the Foxes. So they signed off as owner authorization, but the applicant is in fact Hotchkiss Grove.
I just, just want to thank you.
So I think we can clear everything up here by striking the in an orderly direction along and just say extend it along or extend along Orchard Ave.
Yep.
And if the commission wanted, you can say as reviewed at the pre-construction meeting.
Yep.
Three, given the close proximity I threw in for consideration, three as a bond shall be submitted to the agency prior to construction to ensure erosion controls are installed and maintained until the site is stable. Permit holder is to submit and estimate the cost upon these items to the IW agent for the agent's review and approval. After approval by the agent, the bond is to be submitted consistent with Section 13 of the regulations prior to start of work. Four, I touched on before, erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be installed in accordance with the Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control. Five, if the anticipated seed germination period exceeds one month, more durable temporary control measures such as an, as installation of filter socks shall be installed down slope of areas designated for seeding. Six, comments provided by the town engineer and email dated June 10th, 2025 shall be addressed throughout the construction process to ensure protection of the water course and wetland resources through preventing any short or long-term impacts to the sanitary sewer system. That's where we're talking about the road plates and the test pit and the, the load relative to the sewer line. Seven, construction activities shall be constructed or shall be conducted during dry weather conditions when no precipitation is forecast and if possible, during periods of low pond water levels. I mean, we could change when no precipitation is forecast to when minimal, if you want, given that it is a two-week period.
I don't know if this, this is applicant, I don't know if we've had a no precipitation forecast in 25, but
I mean, want to be realist, probably minimal is a more appropriate word than though. And then the standard conditions and general provisions of all permits and general standard language for expiration date when zoning and planning approval is issued under section slash chapters expires or 10 years, whichever is earlier, if no zoning slash planning approvals are required after five years. So it would be valid to five years from the issuance. Any questions or things the commission wants to review?
Commissioner Bagman, Jamie, I noticed that you're not changing the language as we go and
Yes, the PDF, I could pull up the Word document though if we wanted to do that.
It's okay. The, and in terms of changing the site plan drawing to reflect what we talked about in terms of the riprap and placement of hay bales, does that become a condition or does that just become something that you approve? Or what, what do we do with that?
So if you wanted to rework the condition, you could require that a revised plan showing it be submitted prior to start of work. So that way there's, you know, clearly agreed upon intent rather than standing out in the field and thinking we understand each other. And I think, I think for the riprap, I think the place six inch riprap apron in this area, I think makes, like, I, I think, I see how the crushed stone part makes it confusing because crushed stone, you think more like two to three inch or three-quarter inch. But I think focusing on the six inch riprap apron makes sense. So if, if the commission wants that changed, that, that's something else that you could add. Then you could, you know, change condition three to say erosion controls shall be revised along Orchard Ave and detail for riprap apron clarified prior to start of work as an alternative.
Commissioner Bagman, do you have a preference? Who are you asking?
I, Commissioner Bagman, I think changing it on the site plan is important. If, if people use site plans when they're out there in the field, which is the idea. I think that should be changed, and I think it could be submitted to the duly authorized agent before start of work. That's what I think.
This is Commissioner Boda, I, I tend to agree. I think it's helpful for everyone involved to have the plans documented so that we're clear. Particularly as conversations don't, don't always translate to the contractors who are in the field.
This is applicant Muniz, I don't disagree.
Commissioner Boda, are there other issues, questions, things to be brought up with the staff report or otherwise?
Commissioner Bagman, it's just one question. When the town engineer on the June 10 letter said that they would do a test pit on the town side to avoid any surprises or something like that, does that mean that they're doing one as well? I was a little, I should have answered earlier.
This is applicant, this is applicant Muniz. I interpreted that to mean on a town project, they would have done the, done the same thing.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, that was my interpretation as well.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Commissioner Boda. If there are no other questions or discussions, what next steps do, would the commission like to take? Are we ready to make a motion? Do we need additional information?
This is Commissioner Bagman, I think we're ready to make a motion. And I will try to do that, but I'm going to need help with the wording, I think. So, this is Commissioner Bagman, I make a motion that we approved, we approve England Wetlands 250501, eight Orchard Avenue, the replacement of a privately owned bridge. And Jamie, if you can put the stuff up there, the staff report. Thank you. In accordance, or with the staff report revised 623 2025 with the additional change that that these, where, where are we going to put the change in the site plan? Is that a new condition?
I think it would be replacing condition two.
Okay. So we will change condition to to say that erosion and sediment control measures will be put in place according to a revised site plan that will be approved by the duly authorized agent prior to the start of work. And that will include the wording, the placement of the hay bales along on the eastern side, the change that we discussed in the meeting, and also the rewording regarding the riprap that it'll be worded to say place six inch stone riprap apron. And other conditions remain the same, one through six, if there aren't any below, seven, one through seven, and the general, and the standard conditions and general provisions of all permits and the expiration date of the permit that's in the staff report.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
This is Commissioner Goklowski, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there questions about the motion itself? A hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Bagman?
Commissioner Bagman, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Goklowski, aye.
Commissioner Mersky?
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis?
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Minson?
Commissioner Minson, aye.
And Commissioner Boda, aye. Motion carries? So, Mr. Muniz, you will continue to connect with Jamie in the office. And I think that takes care of that item for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Bagman, just a technical question. Were all the commissioners here for all the meetings? And if they weren't, do they have to say that they've reviewed all the material in the minutes to be able?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, they don't necessarily have to because, because it wasn't a public hearing application.
Appreciate, thank you.
But it's not required specifically because it's not a public.
Thank you, I'll be in touch.
And this is Commissioner Boda, I'll just, while we're on that sort of administrative work. Hi, Commissioner Mersky, we haven't met before, but hello. And hi. And for the other commissioners who know that I tend to talk a bunch, when I'm in the chair position, I will talk significantly less and I do not make motions. So I will leave that all to you, y'all. My job is just a referee, so enjoy. Okay, so moving on to enforcements, we have a notice of violation, A 71 Midwood Road. Jamie, would you ensure this for us, please?
Sure, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. So I had a conversation a couple of years ago with the property owner about wetlands and jurisdiction. Because they were doing a little bit of cleanup activity, nothing significant, so to speak, but enough of concern to say, hey, let's talk about what you're doing and, you know, what's regulated by the agency. And then recently, oh, apparently it was last year. Recently, it came to my attention that some more activity was going on. And then namely, it came to my attention that there was cutting of fragmites. I got concerned, okay, what's next? So I sent the notice of violation, immediately heard back from the property owner. They told me why they were cutting the fragmites. They were concerned that a new pipe had been installed, perhaps discharging water onto their property. They said they don't have any intention of maintaining the cut fragmites or any other activity in the wetland. I think that they have a slightly better understanding of what is regulated and/or that they should ask before doing any other activities in the wetland. I did meet with the property owner shortly after the notice of violation was issued to kind of go over everything in general. And then I was talking briefly with the property owner against date in advance of this meeting. And I understand the property owner has hired a wetland scientist to delineate the wetland on her property and I think just get a better understanding of the wetland and the wetland review process. So going in the right direction, definitely trying to understand and be aware and I didn't do a follow-up inspection because, you know, at this point, it's, it kind of is what it is in my mind. Fragmites will do its thing and regrow. So, you know, it's not like, it's a long-term impact. The property owner did tell me when we were talking earlier today that it in fact has already started to regrow, which I don't find surprising at all. So my main concern really at this point is just making sure the property owner is aware, knows to come before the commission and/or, you know, reach out to staff before starting any projects within 100 feet of the wetland. Property owner is here in case you have any questions regarding the activity. If you want more of a overview than what I gave in the brief presentation intro that I provided. Essentially, what you're seeing here is there's a drainage pipe that outlets to pipe that outlets to a wetland complex, which I believe probably comes tidal as it gets closer to Long Island Sound. But on the northern end, which we're at, it is inland. So these are some photos from various points in time. But here's the cut fragmites. Nothing extremely significant. Ground disturbance is minimal. So I think it's mostly, like I said, making sure the property owner is aware and moving forward.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Bota. What's, what, can you just go back up those like construction fence?
Yeah, so there, there's a private dispute, which doesn't really have anything to do with the commission. And my understanding is that that's kind of a visual of where the property line is. So that was from 2023, it looks like. And then this is the fence that's there now. It's not towed in or anything. So there's still some you know, like critters could go underneath it. I basically advised, once this dispute's over, it should be removed. And if they want to put in a permanent fence, that would be an application process.
What, and this is Commissioner Bota again. What is that new, what is the material of that new fence or line? Is that like, is that like silt fence plastic? What is that?
It's similar, I would say. Ms. Esposito, do you know what the material of that, that fence is? Oh, you're on mute.
You're muted. Just be sure to state your name for the record and address.
Okay, Lorena Esposito, 71 Midwood. I'm not sure what it's made of. It is, it definitely lets airflow through. It's just more of a privacy blocking thing and definitely critters go in and out.
Thank you. Just this is Commissioner Bota, that, that construction plastic is it has a tendency to get things that are migrating through tangled in it and or hatch, things that are hatching out get caught up in it and they can't get out. So that construction fence, I'm glad to see it's gone.
Yeah. Just for clarification, it is gone and it's replaced with this, which I think is a cross between like a plastic and a fabric, if I remember correctly.
This is Commissioner Mersky. I just, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bota, were you about to speak?
No, I was just gonna ask if people had questions.
That's okay. I, I appreciate Jamie, the history is just for clarification from me, is the intention that Ms. Esposito is going to engage with the soil scientist and that we are going to have another meeting regarding that, that update? I know you indicated that there has been progress and, and in the understanding of how to treat the how to interact with the land that is near the wetlands. I just wanted to clarify in terms of the next steps for the commission.
Sure. Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. So, so it would be my recommendation at this point that as long as the commission is satisfied that the notice of violation be closed out, kind of with the expectation that we're likely to get an application potentially in the future for additional activities. You can kind of see over here, there's some knotweed and I, I believe the property owner is looking to, in the future, manage that knotweed. So just making sure you know, there might be a permit and/or there might be a jurisdictional ruling request. So that will be a conversation we have as the property owner decides what she wants to.
Thank you, Commissioner Mersky, for that question. Does anybody else on the commission have questions? Mrs. Esposito, was there anything else that you wanted to share tonight?
Just that I'm grateful that you guys donate so much of your time and energy to make sure we are all protecting this environment. I didn't say my name first, sorry. Lorena Esposito, sorry.
Commissioner Bota, it's a, it's a hard habit to pick up.
Okay. Yeah.
Great. This is Commissioner Bota. With that, then thank you, Ms. Esposito, for joining us tonight at our regularly scheduled meeting. Glad for your sake that you were up early. And you can enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, enforcement B, season correct, 240701, 157 Beacon Hill. Vegetation removal and earth disturbance within wetland and adjacent upland area. All right. So Jamie, will you start us off?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, let me just first check if the representative is present. They mentioned they might be running late. We did just have a phone number join us. Is anyone here specifically for Beacon Hill, Hill slash, is Doug Anderson on the call?
George Logan, for the record, is on the call.
So I had talked with Doug and I mentioned we could table this item if he wasn't here. Does the commission want to table it later in the meeting or move forward with the soil scientist? Did you think that it would be beneficial to have potentially both individuals present?
This is Commissioner Bota. I mean, we, we have other items, so we could send it to the bottom of the enforcements and see if that gives the, either the, the property owner or did you say engineer? Did you say Doug Anderson?
Yeah.
Yeah, time to get here.
Okay.
Mr. Logan, are you here for something else also?
This is George Logan. Yes, I am for probably your next item.
Okay, so. Yeah.
Although, yeah. That item's getting tabled.
Mr. Logan just likes to hang out at our meetings. That's what I've decided that he's just, he's decided to hang out at their meetings now.
And George Logan, for the record, and I'm on vacation, if I may say so.
Oh, no.
But not too far away, so.
All right. So do you want to table it to the end of the enforcement act section? Or do you wanna?
Um, why don't we, this is Commissioner Bota, why don't we move it to after item D?
Okay.
And then that way, I, I just, I think that'll be better. Because I suspect D is gonna take us a few minutes and okay. Otherwise, we can does anybody, anybody object to moving it to after item D? Okay, Commissioner Guklowski, you wanted to say something?
I wanted to ask a question. Do we have to vote on closing off that notice of violation on 71 Midwood Road?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, for a notice of violation, general consensus is sufficient.
Okay.
Okay, this is Commissioner Bota. We're moving on with item C, which is season correct, 250502, 175 Cherry Hill. C 422 Hoesley Road, C 511 and 167 Cherry Hill Road. Failure of erosion and sediment control measures in association within site development show cause hearing.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I received a request from one of the parties to table the item to the July 10th meeting. I sent an email out to the group. I hope George Logan was on it, but maybe he wasn't. Confirming that the item would be tabled and picked up at the June 10th meeting.
All right, so we'll table that.
This is Commissioner Begman. Somebody's been out there to make sure there's nothing worse is happening.
I am going out periodically and I was out at the latest yesterday. Or the day before. One of the days that was like 100 plus degrees.
Thank you.
So I'm in communication.
Okay, this is Commissioner Bota. We are moving on to item D, season correct, 250501, 329 East Main, failure of erosion and sedimentation control measures in association with site development.
All right, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. So just to re, quick recap. The cease and correct order was primarily issued in response to concerns of stormwater bypassing the inlet protection in the, in the existing catch basins on site and going through the curb line inlet and basically discharging to the water course untreated minus the whatever treatment the or hydrodynamic separators on site were able to provide. So there have been some site improvements that they
Jamie, I'm sorry to interrupt, kind of. This is Commissioner Bota. Would you just, for memory's sake and before you, you talk about the failure of erosion and sediment control, could you just remind us of what the treatment chain was supposed to be? Can you pull up the, the site plan?
Sure, I can. Or we do have the project engineer with us if you want to have him.
Is that Mr. Schmitz?
Through it. I have partial site plans. It is. Partial site plans from the application, but I think it includes all the pages that we'd find relevant to today. Essentially, the stormwater management was to have storm, or erosion control management plan was to have perimeter silt fence, inlet protection in the catch basins, and basically have the stormwater discharged through the existing stormwater system and migrate over to the proposed stormwater system as the new system was installed. Very high level. So I brought the erosion control plan. And then as part of that, the application material said that asphalt for pavement should remain in place for as long as possible to the extent possible. And essentially that kind of became, well, we need to pull up all of the pavements that we can do foundation improvements and utility work, which kind of, I think, helped drive the, the situation that we ended up in. So there has been curb line inlet protection installed via implementation of placing sandbags. And so.
So again, just on that, yeah, just on the, on the site plan, this is Commissioner Bota, just on the site plan here, how was the water supposed to flow during construction? And, and perhaps if you want to hand that to Mr. Schmidt, that, that would be okay. I just, before we get into what went wrong, I, I think it would be really helpful to have a very, very clear picture of what was approved.
Sure, sure. Would you like me to answer that, Jamie?
I'd be happy to let you answer that.
So again, my name's John Schmitz. I'm a civil engineer with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway of Meriden. So the plan that's in front of you now is the erosion control plan. As you may recall, the site's already, was already developed previously as the, as a movie theater. And, and around the movie theater was a parking lot. So the majority of the site was paved as a parking lot. Obviously, there were some end cap islands interspersed in the parking lot. And as such, the parking lot had existing catch basins. There was an existing collection system in place to handle stormwater from the development. And there were three discharge locations. One on the northeast corner, closer to the Signalize intersection, yep, up in that area. And then there were, were two separate in the, in the south end, one at the, yep, southeast corner there, and then a third one a little farther to the west, right there. And so what we did in the design was to try to maintain those three outlet, outlet points. Water's flowing under existing conditions, water's flowing to those three points. So under the proposed condition, we're trying to mimic that. Again, there's already outlets there, so we didn't want to create any new outlets to discharge stormwater. So what that meant was that we had to retain as much of the existing drainage system as we could and utilize that to maintain those three outlets. And so in the proposed design, we were trying to, again, tie into the existing pipe, keep what we could, save what we could, and then just use those for outlets. So some of the catch basins that were there before are still there. They still accept runoff. Contractors also installed some new catch basins to accept water. They have removed the pavement. And so, you know, that, that's note because, you know, typically water would run on the pavement and run into a catch basin. Without the pavement there, it's a little, the, the grade is a little lower than the top of frame. So all those catch basins stick up out of the ground by a few inches. And then again, without the pavement, a lot of the runoff that might runoff is now actually just soaking right into the ground because the pavement isn't there anymore. So without the pavement, there's actually less runoff now than before the pavement was removed. So, yeah, but to the treatment train question before, I was, I think Jamie did a good job of explaining it. We have, you know, perimeter silt fence around the entire disturbed portion of the property. And then we also have inlet protection in the form of silt sacks as well as hay bales. And then in, in a lot of instances, we also have sandbags that were installed on the curb inlet side so that water didn't bypass the, the silt sacks. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. And then this is Commissioner Bota. So then Jamie, with that high-level overview, can you then clarify how did we end up with the season correct? And the show cause hearing?
So okay, so here you can see the sandbags have been installed. Let's jump back to some of the older photos. So here you can see that, you know, obviously some sediment has made it into the water course, wetland area. I think I think to some of the points Smith, Smith was saying is it water is infiltrating, but also because some of those catch basins are elevated, higher than grade, I think more water was kind of potentially flowing to the edges of the site. And then when the curb line inlet didn't have inlet protection, so this was the start of trying to address it with some straw wattles. When the water was ponding over here, it would overtop the main inlet and go through the rear curb line inlet and then discharge out to the system. This is a separate ish, issue from when there was, I guess, an emergency repair that the gas utility had to do. I reached out to them. Some silt fence was installed. I'm not entirely sure who installed what. But silt fence was installed and since then, it's been, it was seeded and we now have vegetation throughout this entire area. So this is from back when the, the season correct order was issued. So we had this issue going on, which was allowing some silt to get into the wetland. We had the the stone on top of the, or maybe that was later. And then in the back, in the two rear outlets, this one and this one. The catch basins inlet protection, inlet protection was getting bypassed and sediment was getting into the wetland. So that's why I issued the season correct order. And then from today's visit, this is coming in from the, what used to be the entrance to Regal Cinema Site. This is where they're currently using as an instruction entrance. Some of the stockpiling. I just tried to kind of get a general overview of the site today when I took pictures. So this is one of the catch basins that was of concern. This is that water course area that that subject catch basin and one across the access drive discharges to, you can see that there's significant improvement in clarity of the water. So it doesn't appear that there's been ongoing sediment reaching the water course recently since the sandbags have been installed and/or since we've gotten slightly less intense rain. and or since we've gotten slightly less intense rain. Um stockpile, um, another stockpile. Um, this one appears to contain significant amount of uh, the asphalt material that from removing the pavement.
Uh, sorry, excuse me. This is Commissioner Bodo. Do we have asphalt milling uh, stockpile noted on the site plan?
So the site plan is very generic. It says, provide and install temporary material materials, stockpile with double row silt fence. Materials is not defined.
Thank you.
So this is uh, the two larger stockpiles on site looking to the back. This um fence is approx- the wetland's basically right on the other side of that fence. Um, these are the other two catch basins that were problematic in regards to this other outlet over here. Um many things. Um, me, I don't on this one, you can see the the sandbags and this one you kind of can too if you look closely in. Um, this appears to be a concrete watch out location. It appears to be abandoned. Should probably have the material removed and any new ones should maybe be implemented further away from any inlets. Um, this is this catch basin here, so uh, probably just an indication that the silt sack might need to be emptied. Just trying to get a picture of the water cores um at that kind of corner outlet, if you will, but it's vegetated in and with that chain link fence, it's really hard to get in there and take a look, so this is the best I got. Um, this is looking up towards Route One in Zanes. Um, and then this is the on-ramp for the highway over here, the other side of the wetland. Uh, here you can see the revegetated area disturbed from the gas companies work. General work area on site. Here, the silt fence has been repaired. This is uh, the outlet closer to Route One. Um, tried to grab a picture. It is clear. Amherdan focus well. Um, looking back again towards the rear of the site. Uh, looking towards Walgreens, you can see the start of the foundation for the front building. I think this is one of the disconnected catch basins. I didn't remember to check that when I got back. Um, it doesn't have inlet protection, but I think that one's.
I think that that's the one out by Route One in front?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that one's been disconnected.
And then this is where the construction entrance was proposed to be and I think might shift to as uh when the um renovation of the cinema building starts up. And then moving back into the site, and I think that's it. So that's kind of what the site looks like today. I definitely think the amount of anything discharging to the wetland um has at the very least greatly reduced. Um, we do have a wetland, a report from wetland scientists uh, um, assessing the impacts. And um, I know there was a recommendation that the existing hydrodynamic separator systems on site be cleaned out to ensure that they they function should there be any additional stormwater that does bypass erosion controls as kind of, you know, a secondary measure. I'm not sure if that has happened. Do you, do you know, Mr. Schmitz, if if those have been cleaned out yet or not?
Uh, I do not. I reached out to the contractor uh today, actually, to try to determine that. I wasn't able to get a hold of him, so I I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Commissioner Bergman, this is um, question. Are the are the stockpiles, do they have double silt fences? And what's the difference between a stockpile and one of those big mounds that doesn't have a silt fence around it?
Good questions. Um, no, the stockpiles do not have a double row of silt fence around them. Um, and there are some smaller stockpiles on site that do not have um, silt fence around them. I'm a little bit less, like this one's pretty small and it's fairly interior. Um, there are some that are.
I think like the white ones there would be, yeah, would would be similar to that. It'd be a crushed stone product, so there's no uh, you know, there's no sediment because it's it's stone.
This is Commissioner Bergman, but the one right in in front of the the black one in front of the white one that we just saw.
Yeah, I I I wasn't on site today. I'm not sure what what material that is. Um, and it could be that, you know, I see a dump truck there. I don't know if it's recently dumped. Um, I mean, the the stockpiles, obviously the reason why we stockpile materials, we we put it there for a temporary period of time. Uh, these smaller piles may only be here for a day or two, so it doesn't make sense to put, uh, you know, erosion control around them.
There is also um, kind of like a stone area lined kind of at the base of this slightly higher elevation prior to the silt fence, so that would provide some capture if there were any material running off down towards that silt fence prior to it. Um, getting to the silt fence. Um
This is Commissioner Bodo. Can you go back to the um the entrance of the movie theater? I think it was closer to the bottom.
Which, looking which way?
Oh, I think it was closer to the bottom, like the one of the last images that you showed us.
Oh, oh, the exit from the cinema?
Sure.
When you're following the traffic patterns.
Yeah, there you go, that one. So, um, the substrate there um, is that asphalt millings? Is that?
I I think, again, John Schmitz with BL, um, you can see the sidewalk, the curb. Uh, the curb's about six inches high. They've already milled off the pavement there. So I I think what you're looking at is the um the subbase, uh, kind of a gravelly.
Remnants?
Um, right, stone subbase. Um, but I I know that Jamie mentioned it earlier that this area will become the um the uh, anti-tracking apron, the entrance to the uh, to this this development. Currently, they're using the 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 back entrance, so to speak. They're going around the the theater to the rear. Um, there there are two different projects going on, right? There's the, there's a residential project and then there's the commercial project, which is the theater. That that work hasn't started yet. Um, they'll be submitting a building permit in the next month, and the work on the movie theater will start uh, probably in another two months or so. Um, and at that time, the construction entrance for the residential will move from the back to this location. So there will be um, an anti-tracking pad here with uh, you know, two inch stone, um, similar to what you see in the back.
So the asphalt millings that are on site are not being used to backfill.
I'm sorry. I, you know, I I tried to find, I called the um contractor today. I didn't get a hold of him. I did, I did speak to Mr. Vigliotti about it, and he indicated that the um, you know, the material is being stockpiled for future reuse. Um, I don't know that it would be used for for backfill. Um, and backfill against the I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Commissioner Bodo. It is not considered clean fill. Asphalt millings are not considered clean fill, and so, I mean it being stockpiled on on site like that um, particularly as you've got um, a breach going into the nearby wetlands and water courses um, is quite problematic. Knowing that the milling by themselves, the materials that are within them, but also what was on the parking lot prior to it being milled, all of that material. Um so I'm very curious what is happening with that material.
Right, right, I was being, I'm sorry.
I I I, go ahead.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say that right now, my understanding is, speaking with the owner, is that the material is being stockpiled for future reuse uh, for for subbase for the for the new paving when when it comes time to repave the parking lot. Um, so that mer- material will be reused, um, possibly blended with other material to get the proper um, specification for that subbase for the new uh, for the new parking. So the intent is that it would be reused on site.
So, perhaps, this is Commissioner Bodo. Perhaps we can, um, and Jamie, perhaps this is something that uh, well, I guess we need more information about that because it's one thing for the asphalt to be recycled into future asphalt, um, and reintegrated into future material, but it cannot be used or can, it's not considered clean filled by D E P. It hasn't been since two thousand and six. Um, it has heavy metals, leaches, and heaven knows what else was on the parking lot before you milled it. Um, and so it's one thing for it to be incorporated into future asphalt, which will is not as impactful to to wetlands as it is in the state where it's millings and smaller sizes. That stuff is quite impactful, negatively impactful to wetlands and water courses. So that wasn't indicated. And so this is a lesson for us as a commission um, to be very mindful of quote unquote, stockpile of material. We cannot allow that on an application. We will need, we will be, I will be more mindful of that in the future. So I I would, I would appreciate your getting some additional information on specifically what is to happen with those millings. Um, and moreover, um knowing that they are, anytime it rains, leaching. And now we're not talking about total suspended solids, but they're they're leaching out heavy metals, particularly cadmium, which um, will travel some distance in the soil. We don't know how far in the soil because that that would require significant soil testing. Um and P A Hs and other heavy metals as well. And like I said, who knows what else is already on the parking lot? So we need to know what's going to happen with those, and there certainly should be something more absorbent around them. As I don't know that a silt fence is gonna the 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 issue isn't the necessarily the the sediment, the sands and whatnot coming off of a pile like that. It is the leachate itself, which is problematic.
We we can certainly look into that, um and I can get back to you with some uh, some additional information. I mean, it's just from working in the industry, it's certainly not uncommon to uh, to mill um, you know, to to mill off pavement and save it on site and reuse it. Um, I understand the sensitivity and proximity to the wetlands in this case, so uh, it it may be, uh you know, it's a little bit more um, important given, given that that proximity to the wetlands, but I'll see what I can um, find with regards to the um, any testing or anything we may have. Um, and I can tell you that as far as you're talking about the pavement, I mean, the movie theater has been closed for a number of years and it's basically just been a parking lot, so it it's no different than if you walked a hundred feet over and you looked at the the Walgreens, which was built at the same time. It, prior to the milling, it was just a pavement parking lot. There wasn't anything on top of it, aside from, you know, the paint for the striping.
Because cars, we know cars, um, all of the cars that are on it, they are al- also, you know, slothing off there. It's little, again, cadmium is a really big issue. The lead is an issue. You know, there's, there's just stuff that that comes off of automobiles, um, that stays on the surface. Um, and those things are persistent. They don't go in, they're heavy metals, they don't go anywhere. So, except for to go into the soil or into our wetlands and water courses. So when when we turn things into millings, you're essentially turning them into coffee grounds and the water runs through those coffee grounds and carries those heavy metals into the soil and into our waterways. So, um, yeah.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So on that note, the two things I can think of are could you onsite testing regarding the milling material onsite because the leachate potential of asphalt millings is very specific to the makeup of the particular material that was milled. Um, and or potentially the property owner could look at covering the pile. It's like a tarp type material, which would prevent, you know, water from going through the material at a significant rate anyways. I'm sure someone still get in. Um, and that would also have the added benefit of making sure nobody on site took from that stockpile for activities where it was not intended. I don't know how feasible a stockpile that size it is to cover with plastic. I know they do sell really large sheets of plastic. Um, but that's something that could potentially be looked into. Um
Certainly not unheard of. I mean, salt stockpiles are covered, piles a lot larger than that get covered on a regular basis.
And then that way, you know, if they are planning on reusing it for the base, they're not moving it offsite and moving it back, which obviously has an impact, you know, in general. Um, so those are my two thoughts on the the topic. Um not to cut this conversation short, but I do ask.
Yeah, this is Commissioner, but I I do think that's helpful, Jamie. I think it would, it would be helpful to for um, Mr. Schmidt to come back with some uh, potential solutions um, as well as just, it would be helpful to know if um, what whatever is in that milling pile, if it's mobilizing. Um, so can do some soil sampling around it. That would be helpful as well. I I I, how far, how far is it from the nearest um, wetland water force?
Uh, I would estimate, uh, about, yeah, I mean, well, I, the the pictures, I mean, obviously this is schematic. Uh, but I think in reality, um, it's probably fifty feet or so. Um, you know, along the back there, the wetlands are on the other side of the, actually, I mean, yeah, I have to check. I mean, because the chain link fence and the guardrail along the back is kind of kind of our limits, but in this case, you can see how the wetlands there is another fifty, sixty, seventy feet away from the the silt fence, but it 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 does vary, so I could it, you know, it, some areas is closer um, than other areas, but the stockpile itself is probably fifty feet from the uh, from the channeling fence and the guide rail.
Okay, and and then I guess the second question I would have is with respect to that is, or the fifth question I would have is then, um, how where is the water table relative to that? Um, because if that water table is then connecting to that wetland, that would be the other mode of transport.
Right, right. I I know you used the word mobilization and that that would be the um, the concern.
Yeah. Most of those metals are not gonna move super far through the soil, but the cad- cadmium can move. It de- it depends on the soil type and I don't we don't have enough, I don't have enough information about the soil type to know.
I I've been taking notes, so uh, and and BL does have an environmental um, division, environmental group. So I'll I'll be uh, speaking with them in the morning.
Hmm.
So we can, we can get you some answers.
They'll have a great time. They'll have fun.
Yeah, they love this stuff. Yeah, they love this stuff.
All right, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. Um, I do also just want to draw the commission's attention to the Wetland Scientist Report. I'm not sure if everyone got a chance to look at it prior to the meeting. I believe the soil scientist is present this evening if the commission wants to. Um, kind of hear a summary of his findings as far as recommendations slash assessment, um. And and making decisions, decisions in that regard.
With that, um, with our soil scientist, is that Mr. Logan?
Yeah, uh, Sagan Simko from B L Companies. I'm the soil scientist and wetland scientist that did the uh, the site review. So basically, my recommendations was I I was out there on May twenty third. Um, so not too long after the initial issue, um, and took note of the the main location, which was in the north northeast. Where the the stone was placed, um, noticed the silt fence was overwhelmed and and knocked down. And just made some recommendations to, uh, yeah, thank you, um, to repair the silt fence and get the the. The gravel and a little bit of sediment out of the the wetland area, which appears that they did based on uh, Jamie's. Site visit photos from today. Um, and then I rec- you know, also recommended to make sure the stormwater. Um, filters are kept clean and maintained just to uh. Have an uh, an extra layer of uh, protection for the wetland. But this was, in my opinion, the the largest area of uh, concern that they appear to have uh, rectified, so.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. So to be clear, the silt fence has been repaired. I'm not sure the material has been removed. I didn't look that close to the the silt fence and there has been more vegetative growth since this picture was taken. Um, I had indicated that any removal of material from the wetland should wait for the commission's authorization as its activity in the wetland.
Yeah, and so again, Sagan Simko from B L Companies, again, a lot of times uh, removing the sentiment. Uh, causes more harm than good, um, because you're just disturbing it and getting it into the into the water table. Or into the, you know, the the surface water there, so a lot of times it's better just to leave it. And let, especially since there's a lot of phragmities in there, uh, that'll just grow right through it and not notice the gravel and and uh. Be able to stabilize the area quickly.
Mr. Simko, this is Commissioner Bodo. Given, given the talk about, I mean. Given the material, if you don't think about it from a total suspended solid perspective, but you think about it rather from. Um, more of a chemical perspective of what was on the surface of, um. That was being carried with the soils. Do you still think it is preferable to leave contaminated soils in a wetland? Um, like that, or would it be better to remove them?
Well, I I again, you'd have to do testing to be sure, but um, I wouldn't suspect any of the sediment in this location to be contaminated. Because this um, is not a down gradient of the 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 silt, the millings, like, um, obviously you were having a, um. Speaking about earlier, it's not down gradient of the the milling stockpile, so I would not suspect that this sediment is contaminated in in. In any significant way in that regard. Then, again, just looking at it and and seeing how the the water would flow across the site. Uh, again, you'd have to do testing to be sure.
This is Commissioner Bergman. And some of those D O C, I think they're called D O C reports, they talked, that started in May and they were doing them weekly and. They're signed off, it's in the report and they talk about rock up against a silt fence. Is that what we were just talking about? Was that the same? Okay.
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, that's exactly it.
All right, thank you.
Luckily, it didn't look like any stormwater was overtopping it at any point, but it was a little frustrating how long it took to get it. This is Commissioner Bodo. I'm, I was wondering a- about the, the, is the rock? Um, that the picture that you showed a minute ago with that. Um, inlet and the gravel on top of the silt fence. Um. The intention is for that rock to remain to, in order to. But filter out the fines, slow the velocity.
Uh, Sagan Simko from B L Companies, yeah, I I think they don't plan to remove it unless Jamie or or someone else has heard differently, um. It certainly will help uh, slow down any water that comes up against the silt fence and and filter out any sediment that is in the water.
Yeah, it's correct. I mean, it's not a permanent, it's it's just a temporary fix to, like I said, just kind of help with them. Slowing down any velocity and sediment removal, but as. As, you know, construction progresses, at some point, things stabilize, the stone would be removed, the silt fence would be removed, you know, towards the end of construction.
This is Commissioner Bodo. Is there a reason why you wouldn't have things like those, um? Those silt socks and, um, just curious about the rocks and what happens after. A second, a third, a fourth flush of. Um, heavy flush of rain and the rocks ability to, what what happens to the fines that are sitting in the the rock that just. Get resuspended.
Uh, yeah, Sagan Simko from B L Companies, uh, if that were to become an issue, and you see this a lot, um, like construction entrances and their exits. Um, meant to get the the mud off of vehicle tires, once the the stone gets super saturated with with uh, soil and and. Sediment, they simply remove it and would replace it with clean stone. Um, or in in this instance, if the, in my opinion, what I would suggest is if the stone really gets. Sediment laden to remove the stone and replace it with like a silt sock, maybe like a triple stack of uh, silt sock to really. Slow down and absorb and actually stop the 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 uh, any sediment laden water to get in there. And which is a lot easier to uh, maintain than the gravel. That would be my opinion.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bodo. I mean, I think I, the the thing I, I don't know, I feel like I've seen enough construction entrances where. Those stones are pretty laid in. But I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, again, Sagan Simko from B L Companies, I, we've just been having such a a wet spring, I, and with all these sudden storms. Um, that's, that's mainly the the issue here. So again, if if the the rock becomes uh, dirty. And can't, it's basically not doing it its job of of, uh, you know, sifting out the sediment. I would just replace it with silt sock. It would be, in my opinion, more effective. I spoke to the person on site that was. Here when the the stone was, the gravel was placed and, um, like John said, it was, you know, it's meant to be temporary and it was. Basically, uh, and it was an emergency because, you know, the silt fence had failed and water was getting, you know, runoff was getting directly into the. To into the wetland, so they had gravel, so they threw the gravel down. They knew that would stop the water and uh, filter out any sediment. Um, so yeah, it's it's definitely a a temporary uh, Band-Aid type of situation that could, you know, be replaced with silt sock. Which would be more effective.
Amy Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, the site has been regraded in that immediate area since the problem first occurred. So I think the amount of surface flow going, I don't think there's really water flowing there. Anymore, which is probably why it took so long for the crews to repair it, because they are probably like, why do we have to repair it? The water's not flowing there. Well, you don't know, maybe something on site is gonna change and the water will start flowing there, so we need to make sure it's in good shape.
That's correct. The surface water, the watershed that goes to that point on the surface is much smaller than initially was.
Other, um, other questions, comments, concerns from the commission?
This is Commissioner Bergman. Jamie, we're, it's a cease and correct, but that. So what stopped?
So at the last meeting where this was considered the the. Uh, pretty much nothing. Um, at the last meeting where this was reviewed by the commission, there was discussion about whether all site work had to fully stop or if it could resume. And basically, um, the commission said if the adjustments were made. Um, such as the installation of the the sandbags that work could resume. So there's kind of been an ongoing dialogue with the applicant or the the property owner. Project team of what needs to be happening on site and work has has been progressing. It's kind of a fine balance between, you know, making sure things are getting done to protect the wetlands and also trying to make sure that we don't have. A site, you know, sitting in an exposed condition longer than it needs to, so. There's not been a full stop of work, but they certainly have had hanging over their head that at any point I can say, remember the cease and correct order? I'm not satisfied, you need to stop and do this. Um, so that's kind of where where things have been. Since the sandbags have been installed.
So Commissioner Bergman again, so the double layer of silt fences around the stockpiling, is that something that? We can say, please do A S A P, I mean.
Uh, yeah, the commission wants to push for that, that's absolutely something within your rights because it isn't within the permit materials. Um. I have not pushed for it, um, but that does not mean that it's not appropriate to do so.
Yeah, Commissioner Bergman, my only thinking is if we don't know what kind of materials are gonna be put on the, in those places. Um, because we, because we learned our lesson, then it seems like if. If a double layer of silt fences could help us, help the wetlands, then maybe it it should be done. But. If, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there has been some settlement of material falling off of the piles too, which is starting to stress the silt fence in some locations, so I think that's. The reason why you do a double row of silt fence, so that should you have some stretch of the silt fence where you've got some material perhaps leaking through. You've got that second measure already in place, so. Um, it sounds like, to summarize, right now, the commission's looking for some more information regarding. The stockpile predominantly consisting of asphalt. Based materials to be assessed, maybe look at whether it could be covered, double row of silt fence around the stockpiles. Um, and clarification on what that, um, asphalt. Remnant material is supposed to be used for, um, are kind of the main outstanding items, very high level summary. Does that sound correct, commissioners?
This is Commissioner Bergman. What about the testing? Did you say that? Did I, did I miss, not hear you?
I think I did, but yes, yeah, testing, um. Of the the asphalt for its potential, um, impacts. Leachate and um, adjacent soil. Um, does the commission want the. Soil that, the minimal soil that entered the water course at the front outlet to be removed? Or maybe have it. Be reassessed and judgment call made based on what the condition is now, given that the vegetation has. Kind of more established in that location. Um, I'm trying to recall, and I don't, I didn't look it up before the meeting. Mr. Smith, do you recall, was there inlet, um, or sorry, outfall, like. Any outfall improvements proposed as part of the application? I don't think there were, but I know it was discussed.
Yeah, I mean, I I think all three of the outlets are existing flare ends that uh, under, under, under the initial. Approval when it was installed thirty years ago, I think had some rip rap, uh, you know, rip rap splash pad or rip rap. It was installed at the time, but there was no proposal to replace the rip rap or supplement it. Um, the idea was we were gonna maintain those three outlets and not, not get into the, into those areas to rebuild them. But to, but to maintain them as is.
Okay. This is Commissioner Bodo. I think in terms of re- removal of the sediment. Um, we could do it in the height of summer or should wait until November? Um, to do that. But I do think it would make sense to remove it, not during sensitive times.
I always know, I think, I think, I don't have the report in front of me, but I think it mentioned that the the sediment or the stone that was. That was in there was estimated only to be like one or two cubic feet.
A little hand removal isn't gonna hurt anybody.
Right, it was okay. It wasn't a lot. It was like a, less than a five gallon bucket.
You know, Mr. Semco wants to climb down there and dig stuff up.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything for the wetlands.
Yeah, and and this is Commissioner Bodo again, I I mean, I, the comment earlier about it's been a really wet spring. Um, I'm, I may be stating the obvious to this crew, but. Uh, the the climate models have this part of the country getting warmer and wetter, and so. Um, all plans should assume that we will continue to have more and heavier rains, period. It's our new now.
Great.
Yeah.
In the Wetland Agent, we certainly see if anyone has any more questions, comments, um, but I also want to make sure the commission's considering. Timeframe of when you're looking for that information to be available, um, and maybe have, um. Smith's weigh in on anticipated turnaround time for being able to provide that information specifically in regards to the testing. Uh, results.
I mean, for for samples, I, you know, tomorrow's Friday, we probably wouldn't have a a. Inspector out there till next week to grab those samples. Uh, turnaround times, depending on what screens you run, you know, vary. Between, you know, forty eight hours and and seventy two hours, I think, so, um, it it kind of depends on the turnaround time, but I mean, certainly. Is it, was this a special meeting to the next, I don't know when you.
This is a regular meeting, the next meeting's July tenth. Would that be a reasonable timeframe? I mean, there's the holiday.
Even, I was gonna say, even with the holiday, I. I I, I'd have to check with the environmental staff tomorrow morning, but I think that could probably be done to have results by that time. I don't see why that would be, you know, it could be done for the tenth.
And the other thing I would recommend the commission require for the the next check indie is that, is a proof of the. Um. Hydrodynamic separators being inspected and cleaned out as warranted. Which just gives a little bit of extra. Um. Confidence that, you know, should there be another breach somewhere, we've got a secondary measure. I do know that this site was routinely maintained prior to construction. This is the one site that, um, this office has received. Annual reports, maintenance reports for since before I've started working for the town. Um, but I I don't know that they've been inspected since construction has done it.
This is Commissioner Bodo, so we'll add that in for by July tenth. And are we getting, um, are we getting reports following rain events?
Yes. Yeah, we're getting them following rain events and uh, every week roughly, um. Adjust slightly based on when the rain events are.
Okay, um, and the those reports include the, um. The inlet, all the inlet protections? Thinking about those wrong. Great.
Any, any more from the commission on this item? Jamie, is there anything else that we're missing?
I do not, thanks.
Mr. Schmitz, Mr. Semco, was there anything else you want us to add to your plate?
I don't have anything.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Sure. Excellent. All right. Um, so we're going to go back up to item
Real quick, this item will be continued, the show cause here will be continued to July tenth.
July tenth, yeah. Um, so we're going to return to item uh, B cease and correct twenty-four oh seven oh one, one, five, seven Beacon Hill. I thought I saw Mr. Anderson.
I believe.
Yes, I'm like that. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. All right. So Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, just to recap for the commissioners, and I know not all of you necessarily are familiar with this project. Um, the cease and correct order was issued during an application review. Uh, essentially the commission asked for some wetland area to be, or some part of the site to be investigated as a potential wetland area. Uh, and as part of that process, the area ended up getting cleared and it was determined to be wetland. Um, so essentially the concern now is, is it in an appropriate condition? Does it need to be restored? Um, kind of the, the twist with this, if you will, is that a permit was issued, which does authorize activity to be proposed or to be conducted in the area that was impacted. So we have received, um, an inspection report from soil scientist George Logan, um, and we, um, also have the applicant slash permit holder present to give an update of where the, the project is in timely line and, uh, potential start type time stuff. And, um, ultimately I'm going to jump the gun and give you what my recommendation will be. So you can kind of think about it in the back of your head and any modifications that you might want to to recommend the commission consider, um, moving forward. Um, but essentially based on the soil scientist report, my recommendation would be that the area continue to be monitored for a period of five years with any recommendations for improvements to include, but not limited to invasive species management. Primarily for Fregmities because there's an existing stand right next to the area that's subject to the cease and correct order, um, be maintained during that timeframe to try and give any native vegetation that has reestablished, um, a better stronghold. Uh, alternatively, if the project starts and they are doing the mitigation, the wetland impacted mitigation work, then this would stop and the permit conditions would start. Um, so that's my recommendation. Um, I can see, I'll share GIS map real quick. So this is, uh, this is, um, it was a subdivision. They're re, proposing to remerge the lots and do a condominium, uh, fifty-five plus development. And the southern end of the northern wetland is what was impacted. Um, so this is the northern wetland as was delineated per the subdivision review. And then the, um, orange line is the approximate limit of clearing and the blue line is the approximate wetland edge, this being the blue line and this being the orange line in case those colors are hard to see. Um, so I guess with that said, I would hand it over to George Logan to kind of summarize his findings and his recommendations.
Yes, this is George Logan for the record, Remicological Services. Um, I did submit a report uh, that was dated June fifth. That tells you that I was, oh, there it is. I'm looking at my other computer screen. Um, was out there on May twenty-eighth. Um, as you recall, May was pretty wet, uh, to say the least, one of our close to record times. Uh, so there was evidence that water had left the, the Fregmities marsh wetland. Uh, gone through the disturbed area, the previously disturbed area and did what it used to do, as we discussed, going over disturbed areas and old some broken up pavement and entering the, this is the overflow for the marsh, entering the, uh, the other wetland, the southern wetland. Um, I did inspect and see that there was no erosion issues, um, based on either within the expanded wetland or downgrade into the southern wetland. And as you can see from the pictures that, uh, Jamie will show you, uh, this area is fairly well vegetated or starting to get fairly well vegetated. Uh, for the most part, there's not been much of an encroachment as far as Fregmities, although I expect that that will probably happen in the future. There will be some encroachment. Um, and it's kind of a, a, a race to who's going to be established here. First, the, uh, the native vegetation, the south there are the Fregmities. Um, hopefully the native vegetation is going to be, uh, uh, take off quicker and sort of limit the expansion of Fregmities. As you can see, there is some um, shallowly ponded areas there, probably two or three inches, sort of the overflow from our wet period. But again, I see no risk, uh, that this point of erosion down to the other wetland. It looks like the, the volunteers, the native vegetation has, has taken off. As you recall, uh, even though this area was previously disturbed and then redisturbed, I just practically delineating the wetland. Um, as you remember, uh, Mr. Russo and I, uh, we delineated the wetland out there. Um, there was not any material that was removed, the material that was placed in here. Uh, so, uh, whatever was in, in, in the existing soils is sprouted. And so I told you that there was, uh, some good vegetation that was coming in here. There was a bunch of sedges identified blunt broom encrusted. The grasses like red top were dominating. And then there's other species, there were cattail, smart weeds, water plantain, duckweed is obviously in the shallow ponded areas. And I expect that you know, even within this past month, since I've been there, there's been additional revegetation and, and that this native vegetation is spreading. So that's what I have to report at this time.
Questions from the commission? Or comment?
This is Commissioner Bagman. As part of this process, when we talk about monitoring for five years, is there talk about invasive management?
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the wetland agency. So yeah, as part of the monitoring, um, invasives would be to, would be assessed and recommendations for management provided as appropriate. Typically, when a wetland area is weird like this, the commission would look for a replanting plan. Um, there, as, as it was mentioned, there's minimal ground disturbance. So there's an existing seed bank present that has volunteered. And then also kind of knowing that the, the intent is to go in and further disturb this area um, and change it, you know, after they get any additional approvals that would be required. Um, you know, requiring a planting plan at this phase seems a little
unnecessary.
Yeah. But of course, you know, there's no promise or guarantee that the developer is going to develop the property. The subdivision approval was issued back in two thousand and eight and, and nothing happened. So that's why I am recommending that the area be monitored and, and managed for invasives for five years. So that way we at least have some guarantee of some, uh, management of the area regardless of how things progress.
Mr. Bagman, sounds good to me.
This is Commissioner Boda. I agree. Anybody else? Two, two cents?
So, um, Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, this is a cease and correct order. I think, um, if that's how the commission wants to proceed, you could make a decision to uphold and modify the order to require that moving forward, which would get it off of the agenda until we get to one of those two bench points where ideally the cease and correct order can be lifted.
Uh, this is Commissioner Boda. So it would be to uphold and modify to have it be for five years.
So jumping back to the original order, um, they were to contact us, which they did, flag the land, which they did. Um, and then the commission will review the violation and may require a restoration plan for, um, all or some of the unpermitted activity. So essentially you would be modifying the order to require ongoing monitoring for five years. And I think we should clarify whether this is year one, report one, or if you're kind of that, that five year window, um, for five years with invasive management or until activity under permit IW number twenty-four oh nine oh two starts, whichever is sooner.
Uh, Jamie, this is Commissioner Boda. So the activity for that particular permit in, it was, it's a phased permit, right?
Correct.
And what phase would this portion of the property be impacted?
Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, that's a good point. I believe it is the second phase. I'm going off the top of my head, but my notes here, I, my recommendation was monitoring reports shall be submitted at, uh, each growing season until permitted mitigation work for IW twenty-four oh nine oh two starts. So you could link it specifically to the mitigation work rather than simply start at the permit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is Doug Anderson, the, the developer of the project. Maybe I could just give you a, a, a little overview of where we are and, and I, I'm looking at the plan now. So more or less that, that restoration starts within the first two phases of the, of the project where, um, the initial clearing in the, in the first phase for buildings one and two and future buildings, three, uh, three and four. Um, that kind of all happens initially when you, when we get into the site to get the grading done in there, get the bypass, uh, of that northern wetland to the southern wetland, and then the creation of the uh, southern portion of the northern wetland and, um, then the creation of the permanent detention base and prior to do that. So essentially, you know, assuming the project gets approved, uh, through planning and zoning, um, that all happens as kind of the first phase, you know, first and second phase prior to, you know, prior to the first building being constructed. So currently, right now, we are, um, in process with the WPCA, uh, for, with the next, you know, with a memorandum of understanding on the uh, stewer, uh, for the area and anticipate submitting to, uh, planning and zoning, um, next month. So assuming that process goes the normal course, that's a probably three to four month, um, endeavor. Uh, which puts us kind of towards the end of the year, anticipating possibly beginning that first, second phase at the end of the year, first of of the year, um, and into the spring of, uh, two thousand twenty-six. So just as an overview of the project dynamics, you know, when you're looking at that. Uh, essentially that would supersede, you know, assuming it's approved, supersede the, the, um, any additional plantings or restoration that would need to occur based on the permit that was approved, that has that, um, restoration and, you know, in, um, instruction as part of that plan.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Anderson. This is Commissioner Boda. Um, do we have a commissioner who is ready to um, amend the cease and correct?
This is Commissioner Bagman with some help from my friends. I will make a motion that we uphold and modify cease and correct order twenty-four oh seven oh one to continue one and two, and to change number three to require ongoing monitoring and management of invasive species, especially Fregmities, uh, with yearly reports with the first being May twenty-twenty-five for five years. And or five years or until the permitted mitigation work for inland wetlands twenty-four oh nine oh two starts. And it's whichever comes for, for first. Is that correct? Okay.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Gukowski, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we have a motion on the table. Um, is there, are there questions about the motion itself?
Or come?
All right.
Or comments, discussion in general.
You can't, you can't discuss the motion. Um, okay, hearing none, take a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Bagman?
Commissioner Bagman, aye.
Commissioner Gukowski?
Commissioner Gukowski, aye.
Commissioner Mersky?
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis?
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Minson?
Commissioner Minson, aye.
Yeah, Commissioner Boda, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Logan and Commissioner Bagman for your very clear vote, uh, motion.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you. We've got a few more days. Thanks.
Thanks, George.
All right, next up, E, uh, cease and correct twenty-four oh nine oh three, twenty Huntington Drive. Grading and vegetation removal, understory within a hundred feet of a well.
Jamie Frederick in the wetland agent, um, I'd recommend we discuss this also with the notice of violation, item F, notice of violation and cease and correct order number twenty-two oh six oh one, twenty Huntington Drive. Regulated activities without a permit. Um, looking at our participants, it does not appear that we have the property owner on the call. Um, that being said, I think it's worth moving forward with an update. Um, so in regards to item E, cease and correct order twenty-four oh nine oh three, um, that order was issued because there was some clearing within the hundred foot upland review area without any permits. Uh, subsequent to issuing the order and application was submitted and reviewed and approved. Um, the site has been vegetated and is stable. The area in question was revegetated with a conservation seed mix. I will admit there seems to be a decent amount of mugwort mixed in. That being said, there is a decent amount of mugwort on site in general. And I think to successfully mitigate it, they would need to disturb more of the understory and the soil. Um, would likely become more destabilized. So I'm not sure it's worth pursuing the mugwort management in this particular case, especially since this kind of has been going on, in an ongoing the mugwort management in this particular case, especially since this kind of has been going in an ongoing problem site since twenty nineteen. So I think asking for more activities might potentially cause more setbacks. So let me just pull up. Sorry, I closed out my file folder. Let me pull up some pictures of what the site looks like. And unless the commission feels that the site should be managed for the invasives, my recommendation would be to lift cease and correct order twenty-four oh nine oh three because the site has been stable. All right, so this is the disturbed area. You can see the silt fence at the limit of the disturbance. If I take a look real close, you might see some of the wetland signs, but I don't think so because everything is grown in so densely. But the wetland was about thirty, thirty-five feet away from the wetland or from the silt fence. There's a small pile of disturbance still, but I don't think it's of significant nature relative to the wetland area. And here's our mugwort. And then this is the area that was disturbed that is further away from the wetland that they planted with a lot of seed mix. So any thoughts or feedback from commissioners? I'm hoping that some of that is golden rot. I didn't, I couldn't really make it down there very easily because I didn't want to cut through the heavily understoryed wooded area and there's a fence for the pool here. So it was difficult to get further back on set.
And want to get covered in tech.
That too. Takes a really bad season.
And a little bit of jewel weed.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Gokowski, Jamie. What were these, were these pictures taken recently?
Yes, these pictures were taken on June sixth, or sorry, June tenth. In preparation for our June eleventh meeting that we ended up facing.
It's really kind of vegetated.
This is Commissioner Begamon. So the intent for this area that's been revegetated is just to let it grow. It's not going to be managed as a meadow or anything.
You know, I don't specifically recall. I think there may have been discussion about, I think, I think maybe the permit conditions from the permit that was issued indicated that it could be mowed like a meadow. I don't know that it required it, but basically provided some guidance to make sure that it's not maintained as a lawn. Rented. I mean, there definitely is some other, like you can see some jewel weed. I think I see a little bit of aster. So, you know, the question is whether it gets shaded out by the mugwort or not. And like I said, I think, I do think there's some golden rot mixed in there too. It's difficult from this distance to distinguish golden rot and mugwort this time of year without seeing the underside of the leaves, but.
Does anyone on the commission object to lifting the cease and correct? Or would anyone like to make a motion to uphold and or modify it?
The permit, just so everyone knows, that area to be seeded with conservation mix shall be mowed no greater than one to two times per year at a height of four to six inches to prevent establishing an undesirable woody vegetation. Won't have multiflora roots.
Yeah, so with with the permit, then we don't really need the cease and correct.
Jamie Frederick and Wetland Agent, that would be my advice, yeah.
Anybody up for, this is Commissioner Boda, is anybody up for making a motion to lift the cease and correct?
For clarification, specifically CC number twenty-four oh nine oh three.
Yeah.
Commissioner Begamon, I'll make a motion that we lift cease and correct in the number twenty-four oh nine oh three, twenty Huntington Drive.
Commissioner Mersky, aye, second.
Awesome, thank you. All right, are there any questions on the motion? Great, hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Begaman.
Commissioner Begaman, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Mersky.
Commissioner Mersky, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Minson.
Commissioner Minson, aye.
And Commissioner Boda, aye. Thank you. Commissioner Begaman for making the motion and Mersky for the second. Motion carries and we don't need to do anything with the notice of violation, right?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I'll just provide a quick update. So the notice of violation is notice of violation and cease and correct order twenty-two oh six oh one. Twenty-two oh six oh one was upheld and filed, upheld and modified and filed on the land records. We do have two outstanding things with that. One is ASBelt survey showing the wetland location, which we have received. So that's one check mark. And then the other one is three years of monitoring after planting. Planting occurred last fall. So this will be off of the agenda until those three years of monitoring have been completed, hopefully, and hopefully I'll be bringing it back in approximately two, just over two years, suggesting release of this order as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, moving on, Commissioner Boda, we're going to go to cease and correct twenty-four oh nine oh two. One seventy to one eighty-two Leeds Island Road, clearing and earth disturbance without a permit. Continuation of show cause hearing.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, just bear with me for a minute as I find my file folder.
Just something nice to look at.
So since our last meeting on this topic, I have met with the property owner and his soil scientist out on site. We had a bit of a conversation. We've received some revised materials. Some details I was hoping for haven't been submitted, but we'll walk through it and see if the commission is satisfied with the information available to proceed. We did just receive a report from the soil scientist today, which I was able to take a quick look at. I'm going to pull some stuff up. Have queued up and ready. So I think we're going to start, so kind of to backtrack, a brief overview, walk through things, and then we'll hear from from the property owner and his soil scientists. Cease and correct order was issued back in September. Kind of had off and on discussions. There's some activities that sounded like they may have been agricultural or or civil cultural and related. So it was suggested that if the property owner felt that was the case, he submitted jurisdictional ruling requests for those activities and come up with a mitigation plan for any impacts that maybe didn't fall under anything that could be classified as as a right or exempt. So we have received a jur, or yeah, jurisdictional ruling request. And then, like I said, today, we received a report from the soil scientist that touched on kind of remediating some of the direct wetland impact, basically removing any stone that was placed in the wetland area. Putting in a little bit of topsoil and seeding it with wetland vegetation. So I'm going to, unless the commission wants more of a backstory, I'm going to jump into the jurisdictional ruling request and then let the property owner add any additional details or clarify. Actually, before I jump to the jurisdictional ruling request, this is a survey that was filed on the land records, kind of showing the overall property and the wetlands as delineated back in, I want to say twenty fifteen, twenty? Approximately twenty fifteen. Twenty sixteen. Project narrative. So jurisdictional ruling request indicated as a right specifically subsection one and four is the attached information. So that the property owner provided a narrative of the information. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to look at this. We did receive this a little while back. I think I'm going to actually, since I don't think anyone wants to sit here and necessarily read through it right now, like I said, hopefully everyone got to take a look at it before. I'm going to jump to the site plan and maybe have the property owner kind of provide an overview. And I will just start off by saying one thing I was looking for clarification on that I haven't received yet, and hopefully, Mr. Enofrio, you can touch base on is what does this cross-hatched area here and here mean on the site plan?
You want me to answer that now?
Yeah, so yeah, if you can give a brief overview of what this map is showing in regards to to jurisdictional ruling requests and agricultural activities, that'd be great.
Okay, so it's as is drawing all the, basically the white area there that's listed as wooded is the trees and the area denoted for the the stone areas, like the bluish, I guess, color you want to call that. And then we have the delineation lines, as you can see, and there were two of them. There was one previously done, and then we we were able to get deeper down based on season and methods. And we came up with a more precise one. Jamie's been out there. We walked through that as well. That other line that you could see, it's kind of more more of a straight line, but there's a it says twelve-inch CMP on the left near the driveway parallel. That's that conduit pipe. And that's all, all the base layers on that drawing. I know I I hand drew in some of those other areas. But that's that's all to scale. That's all based off of an original A2 survey. So everything coming off of there, you know, that's how I I was able to kind of geographic locate that stuff. Plus, in addition to a, an application on the phone and in a handheld GPS locator and so with all those things, I I went off of that. The the areas in the X, the X mark there, those are areas outside of the wetland area, but it's there's stone, there's additional overflow of some stone and and it's there's trees there as well. So I just wanted to show that visually for you guys as well. So there is a little bit more of overlap on there. When just moving around materials, there was stone originally in that little gully there. That was the original waterway years ago, and it was a natural drainage. I don't know if everyone remembers that. And then since there's been water, it's been redirected and a lot of things changed in there over the time. And there's water from the town or the street. They piped in underground, at least to that one catch basin there, and they just dumped it onto the property. And that had made another new water line, waterway, and that's going parallel with the road and then coming up the sides. And in the past, that's that's flooded because of nobody was taking care of it. But yeah, that's basically the the layout there on the one side. So I'm going to have all the maple syrup trees. Everything's staying as it is. Going to harness that that maple syrup. It's basically all all maples there. I mean, predominantly all maples there. That front apron there, it's already growing back pretty pretty well with the vegetation. Some of the understory was was cut just in in attempt to clean everything up and make sure there was there was no more continued flooding, which in the past, as I mentioned in past meetings, that that caused damage to the to the other neighbors. And one of my parents who live in the back, own the back property, were one of them. So that's kind of, and then in the front, I was going to harness, you know, replant native native pollinating flowers to also, so the, and put some beehive enclosures in there. So I could actually do some honey as well in there. So I thought that would be a nice way to maintain the natural landscape and also you know, farm some, harvest some honey, which I think would be a great spot for that. So if there's any, yeah, let me know if you guys have any questions or clarifications. I'd be happy to walk you through it.
Amy Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I have a couple of questions and then I'll I'll let commissioners ask. So in regards to these crosshatched areas, they're areas where there's some stone amongst trees, but not areas that you're specifically planning to maintain as an access drive. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. Exactly. I'm not going to cut the tree, anything down. There's nothing more getting cut down. There's no plans to cut anything down. All the dead stuff and all the diseased stuff, dangerous things, and have all been already addressed previously. And that's all I was trying to do in the first place was just clean it up. It's, there's no plans to to develop it. There's no plans to to do any more cutting or filling or anything else like that. So that's where that's where I'm at now. Just want to maintain it, want the property to actually maintain privacy. For my family in the back, we have three acres in the back lot. I grew up there my whole life, and they're still there, actually. They still live back there.
Good evening, Mr. Enofio, Commissioner Gokowski here. When you're saying these X marks, X marks on your drawing here is basically a gully type scenario?
Not even. I would just say it's a little bit of overflow from from the actual carved out pathway that I made in there to to navigate through there. You know, for future use to to get in there. And it was a natural, it was basically just, I followed the natural kind of contour things. There was piles of stone there. There was piles of fill. It was a farm. There was imported soils. At one point, it was, you know, there, a lot of hay was was harvested out of there and other things over the years. We have actually aerial photography of that stuff. I have historicals dating back to.
The beehive enclosures, are they going to be outside the wetlands or inside the wetlands?
So that that technically would be in the wetlands, but it's not. So it's not the wet wetlands, right? So it's 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 wetlands because it's it's categorized as poorly drained, right? So that's, it meets the criteria of yes, wetlands. But as far as underneath it, it's natural. The only thing, there's no stone in that area. It's and it's not an area like there's, there is a corner of Underneath it, it's natural, the only thing that, there's no stone in that area, it's, and it's not an area, like there's, there is a corner of that parcel. Near the driveway and Lees Island Road, on the, on the bottom left corner, which would be like the, I guess, north. Northwest, right there, um, there, it does get. Sloppy in there, and that's still wooded, that still has its own vegetation there, I'm not messing with any of that. This is actually, this is, it's, it's funny, it's, it's, it's actually kind of interesting. Since the water, and this is, and what also Joe, um, George was there originally when he looked at this. Um, and, and so was the, the new gentleman Sipperly, who I think is on our, online here, um. But um, sediment actually built up over the years from the water getting. Expelled from the street, from the other side of the road, there's a catch basin, water went in, and it almost looks like it's built up. Because that's a higher platform right there, so you have, the only real subdued areas are gonna be. You know, parallel with that, there's a trough parallel with the road, you know, that's, that's where the water. When it does flow, that's where it's gonna go, and but it gets stuck in that north, that, that driveway area.
You're, you're looking for us to allow you to, to. Work inside the uh.
Yeah, non-invasive, non-invasive stuff, it's, there's no curbing, there's no um, footings, th- you know what I mean, it just sits. They just sit on top of the ground. And, you know, and then the flowers are there for them to um, pollinate, you know? And my goal is to have different times of year, you have different flowers that bloom at different times of the year, and I try to harness that. And the trees, you know, three different times of the year, if possible, but. Um, and that's the plan, you know, and then obviously, um. We spoke about that area that does overlap there in the yellow that's coming over there. I, I don't have a problem if, if you guys would like to um, you know, see that return back, I mean, to me, I, i- i- it, it just kind of was. A, a little bit of overlap and over area of the, of the original. Landscape there and the way it was, and um. Um, you know, like I said, I followed a certain contour and the, and the certain. Certain um, rhythm of the land, that's the same thing, that, that's the why the driveway came out the way it did, not only because it, it. You have room to move around in there, if you have to get it, you know, a truck in there to cut it, you know, a dead tree way up in the, you know, in the sky or something like that, you gotta have. Some access in there, and that's the access, and everything else is gonna be left un, untouched.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I'm gonna try and provide a little bit more orientation context for commissioners. As quick kind of step back. Um, so uh, this dashed line here represents the approximate location of the wetlands as delineated by George Logan. And then this, this dash line that's kind of blue with different like dashes is the line that was delineated by Sipperly.
Right, and we had different methods because at the time, we were able to, you know, we utilized. Um, a small tractor to, to make the test pits, um, the second time around, the other time around, everyone was kind of just following. Where the tree line was there, and that's where the trees were, so we, you know, as you saw Jamie, you know, we made um, several holes over there. And uh, and that's, you know, that's what it was and. The history of the land too, if you look back at all the, you know, and you, you've showed them in the past, Jamie, um. Facades, the aerials, nothing's ever even spiked up as wetlands except for a little bit on the southern part there. Um, but. It was farmland, that's the best area of the farm area, you know, um, anywhere up north on the uh. Eastern part of the, the property, which is the top of the page, that's all ledge, you know? Um, it's all granite in there, so it's, you're not gonna. It's not gonna be much, much conditions to, to do the beehives anywhere else, I, they're out of the, they're out of the area, they're not to be disturbed, they're on the back. You know, there's no, there's no road going into the property right now, I'm utilizing, you know. Till further notice, I'm utilizing an access from my parents driveway, so um. It's not like I'm gonna be driving through there or trucking through there, it's gonna be on the outskirts of the property.
Commissioner Goklaski again, Mr. Nofield, so. The blue shaded area is currently gravel, stone, right?
It's, yeah, crushed stone, granite.
Okay, so you have crushed stone in the wetlands area right now.
The only crust, the only overflow is that yellow area.
Well, I see you, I'm looking at the delineation line that uh, that is on here and it shows. Um, maybe I'm reading this wrong. But we're. We have it on the bottom part. I see blue area and blue area constitutes the crushed stone, and then the, the dotted line is supposed to be. Uh, the inland's deline, uh, the line.
Right, so there, there, there was three, uh, there was, is Jim, James still on the line or did he? I think we might have lost him, he was on the phone.
I don't see him on the.
Didn't, from the eight six oh number, um, he must have lost service or phone died or something, um, so he came. I, I had him come back because I was looking into this drainage ordeal and the water coming in here and he was, you know. He's on a drainage and uh, committee and everything else for the town of um, Middletown, and that's why. I started talking to him on that, and then, you know, it kind of made sense once we were able to dig, dig. And open up these things that he redelineated this, he spoke to. George on the phone about this and they both agreed there was, it was a difficult site to do because of the stone. You know, I was the one with George originally, I was digging the holes for him, you know, trying to do the best I could with a, with a shovel and a pickaxe and uh. Let's just say that, the, the next time or the next round. That we did, the second delineation, it was done the right way, it wasn't done like that, so it was more precise, you know? So that is, that, so what you're looking at, I, I, I le- I left them both on the page, so there was. No confusion, you have the original one in black and then the other, the other one are in light blue. So that's the, I just left them both on there because I want to.
So Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, let me, let me kind of go back and give that overview and just bear with me because I'm gonna be switching, switching between some things and I might pause. But just try and let me run through it so that way, um, I can get all the information out, so. Here's a GIS map showing the subject site, Lees Island Road. You can't really see it, but there's a wetland south of this driveway, and there's a culvert that discharges. Uh, that flows onto this property, and then there is a storm drain that flows. In, and then the, there's a culvert that flows under these driveways through a pipe north to another wetland area. So if you look, one, one minute, if you look at the survey that um, the property owner used as their kind of baseline. It looks like the water from that culvert may have initially kind of traveled through. The center of what the wetland was delineated at the time, because George Logan's. Wetland delineation largely follows the wetland delineation from that map. Um, when I was on site, it does look like the main. Flow of water, storm water through the wetlands, um, kind of follows the property lines now. Generally speaking, I mean, it's, it, it curves around, it's not on the property line, but it kind of curves. Um, comes to the front of the property. Um, the flow from the storm system goes into that ditch and connects to this over here. So it's possible that the main flow of water has changed um, through the site a bit. It, I believe George Logan maybe separately as well touched on it. It looks like there is some casting material that may have been piled. Kind of in this area, um, from maybe maintaining that flow before the flow was rerouted at one point. Um, and there does appear to be kind of. A high point. Um, in this area, and by high point, I mean it's a couple inches higher, it's not like it's, it's um. A significant grade change. So, uh, I mean, I don't know what the flow through the wetland is, we do have the two different wetland delineations. There's clearly no doubt about this yellow green area, both soil scientists agree that that is wetland area. And then I feel there's one other thing I wanted to. Get, oh, so in the area, you can kind of see the ditch. Where the, the storm flows are conveyed across the front of the property rather than centrally. And then when you look at the older, um, well. It, you, you can kind of see there, it looks like there used to be a.
That's it, yeah.
A ditch also in the center, and maybe there was both, I don't know, and it's certainly when you look at the contours, which I believe these are from twenty sixteen. It looks like there was flow going through kind of that central point as well. So it is possible that movement of, um. The flows could have changed the hydrology in the upper edge of the wetland. Uh, I don't really know, this is kind, so that here, this doesn't line up well, because this is an old aerial nineteen thirty four, but you can see Lees Island Road. And then you can see, you know, part of the, the front part of the site was undisturbed, and then the back was. Um, backslash central portion does appear to have been used historically as a field type usage. Um, and this is kind of a further out view showing the wetland to the south, which does flow this direction to the north. Culvert flowing into the wetlands and the. Piped section of um, flow discharging to the wetland to the north, just for general overall context. So I am gonna step back and take a quick moment while I have the floor to mention two questions I have mentioned. Um, previously with the property owner. The area identified for native pollinating flowers, it's already vegetated, are you planning on? Removing vegetation to establish something else, or are you identifying that? There's vegetation there already that.
Well.
Pollinating species would access.
I'm not a professional with, with, I mean, I know what flowers look like, right, but um, I'm not a professional when it comes to. What's been growing in, I don't want invasive stuff to grow in, obviously, but um, I do want to vegetate. That area to keep it, you know, for pollinating purposes, obvious a hundred percent, so. You tell me, I mean, I'm open to recommendations, as far as that goes, I, you know, I wouldn't mind. Getting a nice, like I said, a nice staggered flow of, of pollinating plants in there, um. I mean, I'm, recommendations.
Yeah, the commission doesn't provide recommendations or come up with plans. Uh, they review what's, they review proposals, so, so my concern is, like I said, there's already vegetation there, I don't recall. What was there, I didn't do a full investigation, I'm also not the best person to do that survey, um, so. I would say that area shouldn't be touched because it's vegetated and it's a wetland, if you wanted to go in there and change it. We would need something from your soil scientist or botanist. Addressing how you're planning to do that and what you're planning to do, like what are you planning to plant? Are you going to remove vegetation, are you gonna bring in topsoil or organic matter? Like all those things we would need to know to be able to review that activity.
Right, right, I, I think, I believe James said he, he did email you after getting that email, the, the type.
So he emailed me something that would pertain to this green, yellow, whatever color you want to call this. Area, but not anything for this area.
Okay, I think that's probably would be the same stuff, I mean, as far as the, as far as the farming right to farm on there. If I put down some native species for pollinating, and then, you know, from what I read. What I have read in regulations and, and everything else they have for. Um, doc, you know, um, guidance documents from the state and, and um, what's available, is that you, you're allowed to. You know, I would like to do whatever works now to appease everyone, but also um, that's gonna work for the, for the farming as well, so. That's, yeah, that's what it looks like, that was what, like a month ago?
Right, so this is already vegetated, so that's my concern.
Right, right.
Are you planning on removing that to put something else in?
I, you probably have to, right?
Well, we would need to know what it is you're planning to put in there and how you're planning to put it in.
Yep.
So I would say that part need, the vegetated part of the wetland needs to stay untouched.
Yeah.
Unless you bring specific plans in, so the plan that Sipperly submitted um, is for. The area of the wetlands where the stone is currently, that is being proposed to be removed. So basically, Sipperly's plan.
Yeah, I would think it would be the same mix of stuff, wh- what we would be doing, um. You know, would it make sense after in the fall when everything kind of dies off again, then you just. Cause, cause these are things, I, I thought these are the things, the farming things, like the tilling at the end of a season and the, you know. Of the soil and this, I thought those were all things that kind of fell, that were kind of. On, you know, unsaid, other than, I understand the distinction of what, what species you want in there, I, I get that, I. But as far as bringing anything in, taking anything out. Maybe just by hand pulling up a section, squaring off like by hand, like you're in your garden, and, and I'm pull, I pull up those dead, uh, uh, section that where I'm gonna. I'm gonna have, have sunlight and I'm gonna get, you know, the flowers in, and I understand you need to see that in a plan.
So, so I, yeah, we need to see a plan of where you're doing it, how you're doing it, what you're doing, and that, that's the case with any art agricultural activity. I mean, we, we had like pepper farms in the past, we need, we need an actual plan showing what it is you want to do. Also that seed mix that is being, let me finish, that seed mix that is being proposed along the wetland edge. I am sure that some of those, those, that vegetation is already in the area. That you've called out for pollinator plants in the wetland, that's already there, you don't want to go in and disturb it, and we had discussed in the field. That a lot of like the pollinator plants that you might look up and see when you, you look up. You know, pollinators, they're predominantly gonna be upland plants, they're not gonna be wetland plants, so you want to make sure you're gonna plant something that will. Do well in the area that you're planting it, so we really need more information if you're looking to alter the existing vegetation. Um, but I do also think there's some vegetation there already that pollinators would access. So. I would say there's not enough information to approve any changes in that area at this time, but if you, you know, in the future wanted to. We would just need a new jurisdictional ruling request that provided the information of. What you were gonna do and how you were gonna do it.
Okay.
Um, because right now, uh, it doesn't, it, it doesn't make sense to just. Go in there and change it.
I, I, I hear you.
Um, and then the other question I had is in regards to the e-hives, um, I had asked. Kind of the extent of that project, um, you know, like how many hives are you looking to put in there, how big are they? Are you planning on putting any sort of access to the hives, or are you gonna leave it natural vegetation?
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, so you need more, you want more specifics on everything, basically, on. Real specific on what, what, what's gonna go on in there, so I mean, I, I, I'm gonna walk, I'm gonna have a natural walk, walking path, I'm not gonna excavate it. I'm not gonna put pavers in, you know what I mean, it's gonna be natural excavation path, I mean, a walk, walk, walking path, no stone. I'm gonna go into there, they're not curbed by any means, they're not built in, um.
So Mr. Anofrio, this is Commissioner Boda, a- all of the things that you're saying out loud in, in words have to be. On a plan that we can see and review in detail so that we can. Based on the details in the plan, make a determination. Um, or ask you for additional information.
Right, even, I, I was just a little caught off guard because of the, you know, just the use of the, as a farm kind of thing, you know, yeah.
It's, it's a weird exemption, but, yeah, and, and the commission does have a, it's the right to request information to review. The proposed activities in context of as of right.
This, this is Commissioner Goklaski, I'm, I'm a little confused, I thought we were looking at this, it's just maple. Um, he was farming maple trees, when did the bees come into play?
I kind of want to just utilize it as much as I can, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be, get rich from making maple syrup, and that's not.
Mr. Ruffier, when you come, when you come to us, we, we would love to help you, but we can't help you if you keep changing things.
I've, I've discussed this for months, I, I mean, I don't know how much you read or not, you know, or what, what gets submitted, I know it's not detailed like these last ones with the old. With the old movie theater, but this was, this has been on the table, so I have discussions, I don't know how much you guys have to. But this was, this has been on the table, so I have discussions, I don't know how much you guys have discussions about this project in particular. But, you know, I have had, this isn't overnight, I didn't just put this in overnight. And I don't think it's a unreasonable thing to have in there, I'm learning as I go. Hello citizen, I'm up into you guys, we're all gonna bump into each other one day or not, Karen's corner, stop and shop or whatever. You know, I'm not trying to get anything over on you here, I've been going through this.
It's, it's certainly, it's, it's a lot, it's, it's, it's a lot of detail, I certainly understand, it's it's confusing. We certainly appreciate your your time and energy and I, and I think it's, it's valuable to have, you know, property that's in town that is being used for for farming. I think we just, the commission isn't in a position that we can make a decision based on the information that we have. And Jamie has got some great guidance on how to help you move forward. And so I think also, given that it's it's nine fifty and this is the, this is the hour where everybody starts to get a little
I know, okay.
You know, everybody's been at work, it's a long day for everybody. I know it's tricky and I I appreciate your patience and and as we we get it all figured out. Jamie, do you think that you're able to work with Mr. Enofio for this, the next couple of details to help him kind of cross the finish line if he's able?
Yeah, so I did send an email, I think on June June twelfth, and I know it looks like a lot, I was trying to break it out into little individual steps. I'm more than happy to meet with you again in the office if that would be helpful.
And then also on that, on that letter, remember, I broke it down kind of, I found something somewhere because there's no guidance documents on this or there's no model plan, which in my line of work with my environmental stuff that I do, there's always some sort of reference like that. But with with that being said, did you see like all the things I put into those question and answers that no one asked me?
Yeah, and I did, I read through your, I read through this and I was impressed. And you've made huge strides since the last time we met and talked with the commission about this. I think that there's just some details missing and like I said, like for the the pollinator area, we need more details if you're looking to swap out the vegetation there, how are you planning to do that? For the beehives, it looks like you started to provide some information, you've got the site map and then you've got honeybee information and then there's no next page. So
Traditional, but yeah.
I mean, I I I don't know how many of the commissioners are really familiar with the beehive process, like how big is a beehive, how many, how many beehives are you planning on putting in there? That's all the information that they're going to need, like three beehives is significantly different than thirty beehives.
Right. Question and answer things that I just feel, we should just feel, we're just talking about it now, you know what I mean? So like, if there's a list of specific things you want, just tell me and I'll hit them, you know what I mean?
I double checked that email, I was probably emotional when you got it because you did put a lot of work into this. And to get hit with like, these are the details that I'm still looking for, probably, you know, wasn't a great feeling. So I'd say take another look at it, if it's still confusing or if you want to touch base to make sure you're hitting everything and that we don't end up with another back and forth, I'm more than happy to meet with you again. And then hopefully we can be able to review all the activities comprehensively and and get this finalized and, you know, not a thing that you have to worry about, the commission has to worry about. And get your sap harvesting and bee hives, you know, potentially moving forward. So our next meeting is July tenth, is that a reasonable amount of time, do you think, for you to try and work out those mater- that information?
I think so, yes.
We got the tenth and the twenty
We don't have a whole lot on our agenda, so we should be able to get to you earlier.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
At this point, applications can only be for receipt.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Enofio.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thanks, you too. All right, Jamie, you're gonna tear through these, right?
Yeah.
Like really fast.
Other business, none, applications for receipt, none, agent approvals, IW twenty five oh five oh two. Seven Valley Road Septic System brought to the commission, may locate for agent review. IW twenty five oh six oh one, two and four Commercial Street excavation for remediation. There's previous contaminated soils adjacent to the foundation that they're looking to remove and properly dispose of, all work will be overseen by an LEP. IW twenty five oh six oh two, two fourteen Alps Road, expansion of deck along the back of the unit, not getting any closer to the pond, which definitely has been altered as part of the development of the project or the kind of development. Any questions?
Thank you, everybody, is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. Second.
You got that, Katie, that was Kokowski and Pepitoneus.
Good night.
Got it.
Good night, everybody, thanks for cheering.
Good to have you back. Good to have you back.
I don't know if it's good to be back.
Don't you start like that.
Well, I'm done with, done with school.
Yeah, we have missed you, you know.
Yes.
Now the commission's back to normal.
Back to normal. Oh, thank you, all right, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.